Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, Thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things, we pray in your name. Amen.
Mr. Smith, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, ma'am. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Ms. Acevada. Mr. Campbell. Mr. Egan. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Lemoine is not with us this evening. Mr. England. Ms. Dyssart. Mr. Long. Mr. Smith. Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. First item on the news, or the super news. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Alex Schneider. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Dyssart. So, in your reports, you have the communications report for the last month. The first page is just gonna include some of our social media focus. You'll see the different posts, how many people were reached, and then the level of engagement. As you all are well aware, the banquet did air last week on the 21st and the 22nd on YouTube and Cox Channel 8, and then it's continually playing. You'll see the engagement from YouTube on page two. Page three includes just some pictures of some of the press releases that made it into the paper and that you guys are always copied on, but you can get a sense of that. And then the final page for this evening, we're gearing up to get some of our publications out for this summer. We will be releasing a brochure at the end of May to all parents. And then the calendar and quality report are all underway. And I know I talked to you all about the new templates for our websites. We are projecting to release those by the end of June. So, once the teachers get through testing and everybody kinda settles down, we'll put those out. And unless there are any questions, I'm gonna hand it over to Barry and Jack in the back.
Are there any questions at this time?
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News. Hello, I'm Barry Lemoine.
And I'm Alex Schneider. And welcome to this edition of Super News here at Smith Elementary School.
You know, they say you can't please everyone, but our first story sure made a lot of people happy. As a gesture of appreciation, the St. Bernard Parish School Board recently voted unanimously in support of a $2,000 stipend for certified employees and a $1,500 stipend for non-certified employees.
On behalf of all the board members, we wanna just recognize all of you for being there and for our students. And it's truly been appreciated. We wish we could do more, but that is what we were able to give, and we truly appreciate each and every one of them who, again, were on the front lines of the school system. And we thank you.
We appreciate the support of the board and know that our employees are very happy by this gesture. Thank you very much.
Also bringing joy and a sense of security, were the over 600 St. Bernard Parish public school employees who received their second dose of the Moderna vaccine. These efforts alongside the vaccination efforts already underway are estimated to result in nearly 70% of employees being vaccinated. We thank the Methodist Health System Foundation and all of our partners for making this critical milestone possible.
In other news, community leader Matt Woodward joined forces with Mr. Charles Kassar and nearly 30 students for a recent leadership summit. Held in the school's tech theater, the program was an opportunity for young people across the district to develop skills and strategies in becoming positive student leaders.
And now, let's meet some other student leaders, the news team at Smith Elementary.
Hello, I'm Journey Williams.
And I'm Chloe Summersville. And welcome to Smith Elementary School, the home of the superstars.
And speaking of stars, we'll begin our Super News segment today with a look at the Starbase Program. Recently, our 5th grade students completed four days of interactive science lessons right here on campus. We learned about gravity, building, and launching rockets and robotics. The activities were fun and interesting. We also discussed careers associated with science and technology.
I wonder, do you think they have cows in a Milky Way? Anyway, we might not have had milk, but we did enjoy pizza when our school celebrated its reading awards program. In partnership with our local colonial students who reached their monthly reading goals are rewarded with pizza and a chance to win a Kindle Fire electronic device. It's a great way to encourage us all to read. They even donated a book to the top reader in each homeroom.
They also helped celebrate friend-aversary with our 2nd graders. Each student received a special gift, a book from the Elephant and Piggy series.
That's really something to cheer about. And speaking of cheering, let's give a shout-out to our new addition to our school, our new superstar mascot, Wes.
Our school also brought history to life with a pair of events. First up was our mock president election, where students had the opportunity to host and participate in the election process. The purpose of this activity was to teach us how our presidents are chosen and to stress the importance of voting.
History was also the focus earlier this year when our school hosted its annual Black History Month. Students dressed up as their favorite African-American hero or character in a book. Ruby Bridges, Harriet Tubman, and Dr. Martin Luther King, and many others were on hand for the costume fun. Next time, I may dress up like Ms. Bailey or one of my teachers here. I mean, they're heroes too, right?
Right. And before we go, I'd like to congratulate my co-star superstar today, Chloe, who was named as our school's Student of the Year.
Thanks, Journey. And thanks to all of you for tuning in. Now, back to you guys from Penn TV. Bye.
Nice job, superstars. We'd also like to offer kudos to our High School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Annalise Kassar Tedesco, who was recently named as a semifinalist in a statewide competition. This dedicated woman has always made us proud, both as an award-winning student and now as an outstanding educator. Congratulations and thank you for all that you do.
As we all know, a good education for children begins at an early age. St. Bernard Parish Public Schools is one of the only districts in the state to offer a universal, tuition-free, pre-K program to any child residing in St. Bernard Parish. Students will need to be four by September 30th, 2021, to qualify. Registration for preschool is now open. Families can find more information about the program and how to register by visiting our website.
And now, let's see what's happening at Davies Elementary School for its on-location Super News segment.
Hello, I'm Drew Jones.
And I'm Mia Morales. And welcome to Davies Elementary School, where we always put the eye can and pelican.
We'll begin with our Pollination Scavenger Hunt created by Mrs. Fel and her 5th grade students. This art exhibit was a school-wide foot trip instead of field trip. Each grade participated in the making of the exhibit and took part in the scavenger hunt. Students had to respond to 10 pollination questions using the mural, the infographic, or by searching around school for the correct answers.
When each class completed the hunt, they received a free dress day voucher and were put into a raffle to win a class pizza party. Then, on April Fool's Day, Ms. Fel pulled the two raffle pizza party winners on the morning news. She signed off on the news telling students that she didn't have any other parties to offer. April Fools!
She announced a school-wide freezy party that would take place during each of grade levels' cultural arts hour. She handed out nearly 700 freezies throughout the day. It was a sweet surprise for us and a cool way to kick off April.
And now, we'll go from freezies to Easter eggs. Recently, our friends from Valero visited our campus with the surprise guest, the Easter Bunny. They provided our kindergartners with baskets and a fun-filled Easter egg hunt. I guess you could say those little kids got some big exercise.
And keeping with the school tradition, recently, our 5th graders received their Pelican the Pirate t-shirts.
These shirts symbolize our transition from 5th grade to middle school, as many of our classmates will attend Tris next year, the home of the Pirates.
And our final story today highlights our PBIS Pelican store. As part of our Positive Behavior Program, students who do the right thing are rewarded with Pelican points that can be used at the store for goodies like snacks, extra recess time, or even lunch with one of our school leaders. It's a fun way to encourage everyone to do their best each day.
Well, that's about all the time we have today. But before we sign off, I want to congratulate my co-host and fellow Pelican, Drew Jones, who represented our school this year as its Student of the Year.
Thanks, Mia. And thanks to all of you for watching. And from all of us here at Davies, see you next time.
Good job, Pelicans. Your future certainly looks bright. And speaking of planning for the future, St. Bernard Parish Public Schools is currently recruiting our next group of dedicated and passionate teachers and educators. Our job fair is scheduled for May 8th, and we currently have several positions open throughout our district. If you are interested in joining the St. Bernard Parish family and making a difference in the lives of the children we teach, please visit our website to complete an application.
And while the school year is beginning to wind down, state testing is ramping up. State testing will be taking place throughout our school district starting this month and continuing through the month of May. Specific grade-level testing dates and information will be available for parents on our websites and provided at each individual school. To help your student do his or her best, it is important that they get a good night's rest, have a healthy breakfast, and arrive at school on time. Good luck to all of our teachers and students.
And as we look forward to the summer, the St. Bernard Parish school system will be offering its popular Summer Science Camp once again. For children going into 1st grade through those children going into 5th grade, Summer Science Camp will offer students a fun opportunity to explore all things STEM at our one-of-a-kind Science Center in Planetarium, the MoMA Center. The camp is only being offered May 31st through June 11th, and space is limited. Registration information can be found on our district website or by calling our central office.
And before we go, we'd like to share a quick video that we helped create with the students and staff at Arlene Miro Elementary School. As May is Teacher Appreciation Week, we offer this as a tribute to all of you who dedicate your lives and career to children. Enjoy.
I love coming to school.
Thank you, bus drivers. Thank you for bringing me to school each day.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you for giving me wings.
Thank you for making me happy.
Thank you for inspiring me.
Thank you, parent educators.
Thank you for making me feel valued.
Thank you for making the impossible possible.
Thank you, school counselors.
Thank you for helping me achieve my dreams.
Thank you, school nurses.
Thank you for loving me.
Thank you, secretaries.
Thank you for making me smile.
Thank you, cafeteria ladies.
Thank you for cooking my favorite lunches.
Thank you, speech therapist.
Thank you for believing in me.
Thank you, custodians. Thank you for keeping my school clean. Thank you, coaches.
Thank you for going the distance.
Thank you. I love you.
Thank you, we love you. Now what?
Thanks for watching. And don't forget to check out our celebrating our school community banquet airing throughout the next several weeks. It's a great way to celebrate our school family.
It sure is. And from the team at Penn TV, we'll see you next time on Super News, where we always let...
The Super News roll.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. That was great Super News. As always, our students really are impressive, and they speak so well, and they present themselves so well. And that was a beautiful video, too, that was made by all the students at Miro Elementary. Very nice. So, we wanna thank you, we wanna thank Penn TV for always covering it so well. And again, Smith Elementary did a great job with their presentation, and Davies did also a great job. So, okay, any questions? Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm interested in the new template project release on June 30th. Maybe we can give it a run-through here at the board when that comes out?
Yeah, we're doing our first round of transitions this week, and then as we kind of roll it out, you'll see it before we go live.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Warner, what project you said?
She mentioned on a website update, new templates. So, they're gonna have new templates on the website.
Okay.
So, the content will be the same, the look will look different.
Okay. Kinda like our board?
Yeah.
Agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Very new template.
I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? Okay, great job, as always. Thank you, Ms. Schneider, and thank you, Jack and Barry in the back. We appreciate it. Okay, now, next item on the agenda is the incorporation of the April 13th, 2021 General Committee Meeting minutes into the April 27th, 2021 regular monthly meeting.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith.
I'd like to make one adjustment on that, please.
Okay, Mr. England?
I was absent for that meeting.
Okay. Ms. Benetak, you have that? Thank you, Mr. England, for that change. Anyone else? Okay, there being none. There's a motion on the floor and a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, before we go on to the next item, and I apologize, I really wanted to do a moment of silence before we began our meeting. But I'd like to take a moment of silence at this time for Martin Campo. He was a former board member who served on this board for many years and was a fine gentleman, and we appreciated his service on this board. And our deepest condolences and sympathies go out to the Campo family. Martin Campo, if you would, a moment of silence. Thank you. And again, our condolences and sympathies go out to the Martin Campo family. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the review of personnel changes. And in your folder, those that are highlighted in yellow or additional changes to personnel. And I know we mentioned Mr. William Carey from Shelby High School, who's a business teacher at Shelby High, and he was with us for many, many years. But now, I'm seeing another retirement, Ms. Shelley Lacoste from Miro Elementary. This is a great loss to our system too, her and Mr. Carey. Shelley was always a vivacious, very energetic teacher. You know, just to hear her speak would get you excited about education, and I know she was very involved in the Reading Association, and she did a wonderful job for us. And she'll be sorely missed, but we wanna wish Shelley Lacoste a happy retirement and William Carey. And then we also have Donna Acevada, who is retiring. And we wanna thank you, Donna, for all of your years of service and wish you a happy retirement, and you'll be missed greatly too. So, happy retirement to all of our retirees. You know, everybody deserves to retire, but it's sad when you see these names who have been with us for so many years. So, thanks again to all of them for all of their years of service. Does anyone have any questions or any other comments on personnel changes?
I would just like to add my congratulations to our retirees as well. You know, Bill Carey had taught at St. Bernard High, now at Shelby High School many, many, many years, has done a tremendous job. Shelley Lacoste, you described her perfectly, Ms. Dyssart. She's gonna be a tremendous loss, you know, at the elementary level. And then again, Ms. Acevada, who's a parent educator at our preschool. But as I say all the time, many of these retirees, they keep coming back and they volunteer and they help. We have quite a few coming back next week who will, and this week, who are going to monitoring, monitor statewide assessment, because we have to bring some additional people on anytime we do the state assessments. And we pull from our retirees a great deal. And that's one of the, I think, highlights when they come back for that week or two. And we know our kids are in good hands as they monitor those assessments alongside of our teachers. So, congratulations to our retirees this week.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else? Okay, no action needs to be taken on this item. The next item is an approval of the revised 2021 general fund and special revenue funds budget.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Acevada? Any discussion? Mr. Fernandez is here tonight. Any additional questions? Okay, there being none. All in favor of the recommendation to approve the budget, general fund and special revenue budget? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Next item is the approval of the St. Bernard Middle School roof bid tabulation.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith?
Second.
I'm sorry, second about Mr. Warner? Are there any discussions at this time? Mr. England?
Yeah, how long is this gonna take and when it's gonna begin? Mr. Fernandez? What time period we're looking?
Once the project is awarded, it'll begin, the contractor will start gathering their materials and getting things mobilized. The work will start immediately after the end of school. It'll go through the summer, and most of the work that's going to affect the students or the school operations will be completed by the beginning of school. There'll be some minor touch-ups and things like that after that, but bulk of the work is planned to take place during the summer.
That's what I was trying to address right there. You see, there will be no disruption in the school year.
No, sir.
And weather permitting.
That's true, too.
You know how those chain orders come in if Mother Nature sends a deluge of rain and...
Yeah, she has her own agenda.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Long?
One brief question. Votchay, talking about weather, with hurricane season coming, I mean, this roof won't be our responsibility until we, until the job is complete, correct?
Right, until it's substantially complete and they sign it over to us and we accept it.
Correct, that's what I thought. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, there being none, all in favor of the motion? Just to say, that was the lowest bidder. To, Mr. Fernandez, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for milk and milk products for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Long, second by Ms. White. Any discussion? And all of these were also lowest bid, correct, Mr. Fernandez? Okay. Okay, any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for bread and bread products for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion or any questions? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for groceries for the period of July 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion?
I just wanna say that, you know...
Mr. Warner?
It's just gonna be interesting to see the bids that come back on those three items to see if inflation kicks in and compare it to previous prices of previous years. We can keep track of that.
Good point.
That's it, I'm good.
Okay, anyone else? There being no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an approval of Head Start COLA and COVID-19 funding. Was this, this was on the agenda for the committee meeting?
Yeah, we did. It was a recommendation.
It was a recommendation, okay.
Go move.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor to approve the approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next, the items we place on the next committee meeting agenda, does anyone have any at this time? And of course, should you have before the next agenda, the next committee meeting to put any items on the agenda? Maybe, Ms. Votchay, if we could just, for the next committee meeting, go over the summer programs?
Yes.
That we'll be having. Thank you. Okay, next item are superintendent's recommendations.
The only thing I wanted to, you know, bring to your attention this evening, to the community as well, is, you know, we have operated this school year, really, two school systems, an in-person system and a virtual school system, which has been very difficult for our, for our teachers, for our students, our parents, and the community as a whole. And in going through that, I think we've, our teachers have done a tremendous job in oversight and managing it, and we've done it different ways at different levels. But, you know, we all find that in-person learning is a much better vehicle, especially for our youngest, our youngest students, learning to read, our five, six, seven, eight-year-olds. It's very difficult to do that in a virtual setting unless you have a very committed child and support family structure that's going to help that child master the concepts. Now, with, hopefully, all the precautions that have been in place with COVID and the vaccinations that are happening now, for next school year, for our elementary and our middle school students, we are not going to offer a virtual option to the masses of students at the elementary and middle school level. We will offer for students that are medically... We will offer for students that are medically fragile or have a doctor's excuse that there is a medical condition or something within the family that in the environment that may present itself this coming August, that it would be a necessity for that student to have at-home learning in a virtual process. So, we're going to be sending that out to our current virtual students at the elementary and middle school level to inform them that we're going to offer only in-person learning next school year at those levels unless there are medical excuses supported by doctors' recommendations that they would have to give to us to provide a virtual learning environment. At the high school level, we're going to look at students with the same medical fragility if there's an issue there, and then on a very limited basis, take a look at, at the high school level, maybe a few other exceptions. We have found this year that some students, they may have one or two credits to finish, or they may, because of family situations, have to spend more time in a working environment, and what is best for that student and the family is to offer that virtual option. But it'll be limited, it'll be done on a case-by-case basis. Now, even with students with the doctor's recommendation at the elementary and middle school level, we are going to have some, I guess, guidelines in place that they have got to keep up with what is happening, you know, at home. They've got to pass all of their core area subjects each nine weeks, and they can't be absent more than a certain number of times each nine weeks. And by absent means not being logged in to work on those activities and not logging into the Zoom classes or whatever other offerings that we have if it's more of a self-paced curriculum. So, that is what we're looking at at the moment, unless something happens in the world and in our environment that would change the situation this coming August. But we are going to be informing all of our parents of that very soon, or parents of our current virtual learners, that that will be the situation for this coming year. And we think that's going to be a very sound educational option that we're offering. I mean, to me, it's the best practices for the, for most of the population. Our summer programs this year, if your child is going to summer skills program or summer learning program, that's going to be all in-person as well. So, hopefully, the situation in our community and the world at large, as hopefully things get better within this environment, that we can get back to a more normal school situation. And if anyone has any questions that they'd like to, you know, or comments would like to make, can answer anything at this point.
Are there any questions at this time? I have one, Ms. Votche. So, K through 8 will be strictly person-to-person learning in school, except for very rare cases?
Yes.
Okay.
Medical, right.
Okay.
Of the child or family members as evidenced and supported by a physician documenting the situation.
And then, high school will be mostly in-person and with the option of some virtual learning? You know, the virtual...
On a limited basis.
Limited basis, okay. So, with the virtual learning with the high schoolers, are we going to, is it going to be through the same system that we've, we used this year?
This year, right.
Okay, and we're going to contract through the same company?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that, you know, the students and the families will know that when they do request that virtual. But that's what we'll do. And it has worked for some of our older kids. For example, you might have, we might have a student that's taking classes at Nunez Community College, and they only have one class to take on campus. And we can offer them the option of taking that one class virtually, and they're spending most of their time on the community college campus. Or it could be a situation, a family situation, where the student is in a working environment and may have two or three classes to complete, and it might work out better for that student and the family if we allow that to happen. But it's not going to be a wholesale, would you like to do this? If a family is adamant and wants a virtual option for their students, there are statewide virtual options that they can apply for. You know, the K-12 virtual schools in Louisiana, so that option does exist. But through the St. Bernard Parish school system, we feel that this is going to be, we're going to offer what we feel is the best educational experience for the majority of the students. So, the virtual will be the exception and not the first offering.
Right. Okay.
Unless things change, you know, within the environment between now and then.
It'd be great to get back to some normalcy, for sure.
I think so.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Long?
So, Ms. Votche, the in-person learning, that will still be based on any criteria that the state may put out concerning social distancing and whatever?
Absolutely, right. Right now, I do know that, for example, the governor came out today with the easing of some restrictions, but kept the mask mandate in place for schools, for K-12 schools, for colleges and universities, for healthcare facilities, and for all of the state buildings, you know. So, we're going to be watching all of these things very closely. We're going to see come August what those restrictions will be. The more people who get vaccinated within our communities, the more restrictions can be lifted. And we're hoping to see that happen within St. Bernard Parish, so that the more people protect themselves and protect others around them, the more freedom we can have, freedom of movement, I think, we can have within our school facilities.
Also, I think there was some talk about a possible vaccine available to children by the summer.
We've heard that, too. Right now, anybody 16 or over, 16 years of age and above, so there are many of our high school students who are eligible to be vaccinated. Of course, that is a parental choice at that point. So, if they are going to offer and make vaccines available to other children, that, again, will be a parental choice.
Well, as you said, the, but, I think we should encourage people to get the vaccine, and the more people we get vaccinated, the sooner we can put all this behind us.
I happen to agree with you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, anything else, Ms. Votche?
No, I think that's all for this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion adjourned?
Move, please adjourn.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Acevada. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.